Bites is good to, bites is good to. And I would love to be there.
So.
So our first order of business tonight is approving the minutes of April tenth. Is there, anybody read them? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, done. Move right along here. So our first case is eight, six forty nine, sorry, six forty nine Main Street. Is that you?
Yes.
So if you would kind of introduce the project a little bit. And we've all seen the documents and read it, but we need to have a staff report and then we'll hear from you.
So I'm Greg Tatnall, GT Building Corp. So I'm representing Jessica Middlebrook of six forty nine Main Street in Watertown here. So the purpose of the project, it's basically a kitchen renovation where we're adding on a small section about eighty-two square feet off the back left corner of the house to just kind of open the back of the house up a little bit and make things flow a little bit better. Then there's also a mudroom, that's the non-conforming part of the project. And the conforming part of the project is on the right-hand side, the right rear. And that's just a small mudroom addition, but that, that part is conforming.
That it? Are you a builder or you're gonna do it yourself?
Yes, I'm the builder.
And you're gonna do it yourself?
Yes.
With some help probably, yeah.
Yeah. Choice is made by Jessica.
So, do we have a staff report? I'm sure we do.
Yes, very quickly. He described the project pretty well. The plans are shown behind me and on the TV in front of me. And I pointed out the before, the before and after condition. Essentially, the only part that's non-conforming is that mudroom, which you see on the far end.
The mudroom is conforming.
I beg your pardon. The mudroom is conforming because the lot does a funny jog. It's the rest to my left that's non-conforming. That's the infill between the mudroom and the deck. Special permit finding is substantially more or less detrimental than the existing condition. The South finds that it is not substantially more detrimental because the new parts encroachment into the rear yard setback is limited. Again, because the larger section of the new mass will follow the existing sections rear wall line.
And this one ready?
And the infill between that and the kitchen bump out. The new structural elements will be screened from public view by the existing house. The addition is adjacent to the neighbor's rear yard. And this area has more similar to a side yard and keeps a setback consistent. In addition, the garage, which is detached, will screen other abutters to the north. And several of the other houses in the neighborhood have similar construction to the rear. And again, the setback in the new mass is new, but it's one story. And in keeping with the architecture of the existing dwelling. As such, we recommend a conditional approval as a special permit finding and the conditions are basically our standard ones, holding them to the control plans they submitted. They are going to get a current property survey because that's something the zoning board of appeals is gonna want.
I actually have that with me. That's been done and I have a certified plot plan.
When we were out there doing the staff visit, they were shooting the site with the onolites. So he's aware that the zoning board of appeals wants a current plot plan. And then the rest are basically no modifications without coming back to the board, record the decision, provide an as-built and the standard lapse of one year. So the discretionary permit will lapse if they don't get it activated. So we have no further comments and again, recommend conditional approval.
So before we have any other questions, the board, I would only point out that sometimes one draws more of the site here. So for instance, there are outdoor steps that don't show up here. So it was a little odd, but anyway, I think it's fairly clear what you're trying to do. So any board members have questions, concerns, issues?
Just one quick one. Looking at the rear elevation proposed, is there a reason you wouldn't put a window in the kitchen as well? It just seems like there's only one double window in the entire length of the back wall and.
This building is right there, so there'd be room and upper cabinet space over there, which may just now be on one way.
It doesn't really affect either way whether, how I'm gonna perceive this. I just would think it would be nice to have one more window somewhere on the back facade, even if it's over a little bit. But if kitchen cabinets are a premium, then.
Yeah, I agree with you, it's just there's limited upper cabinet space.
Okay. So, thanks.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
No.
I had the same question Jason did about the windows.
So are there questions from the audience? Do you wanna make any objections to the case or probably not? Well, that being the case, anything else you wanna tell us? When do you plan to do this?
The project will be starting in June, assuming we can get permits and stuff by then, but probably sometime in June.
Well, we entertain a motion probably.
Sure. I moved at the planning board, recommend to the zoning board of appeals the conditional approval of this special permit finding request for a one-story addition in the rear yard setback as it meets the criteria set forth in the Watertown zoning ordinance.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. So you go to the zoning board in two weeks.
Yes, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So our next order of business is nineteen Loomis Avenue.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Norman Kerlop. I represent the owner. Mr. Hartunian and his wife. I'm the architect of the project. We had a meeting with the planning board staff. And after discussing with the owner what they are intending for this project, we developed a scheme. I took the scheme into the neighbors' homes. I didn't see any objection. There was one lady who had sent a letter some time ago. And I don't know whether she sent another one. And she's a lady who just lives across the street from the subject property. And when I asked what's concerned, she said, oh, I don't like this gentleman. He always parked his car in front of my house. Is it go, and I said, well, now I don't think that may happen because you will have plenty of parking space at the side yards. Anyway, he, she said she doesn't understand plans or architecture, so she didn't much bother to look at the drawings. I tried to describe, be comprehensive. And I explained that when she's looking at the house as proposed from her house and from the street, the house is narrower. So the streetscape will look less dense, but the house is longer in length. The Mr. Hartunian and his wife have two daughters and they intend to stay in town and have the family be together. And that's why they have developed a scheme. There will be average size or less bedrooms. And the living space and so on are not that extravagant. So overall, by itself, it looks a little bit humble, but from another point of view, I'm sure some of you may have some other criticism. But this is what the owner likes to have and this is what they would like to have for their family and stay in Watertown. I'll be pleased to answer any questions.
Who lives in the house now?
It's being rented. Yeah.
And then who would live in the house when it's completed?
Our two daughters.
Separate fam, two separate families?
They're young adults. They graduated from college and they're on jobs in Massachusetts. And we're trying to encourage them to stay in Massachusetts. So we're all dreaming to build something for them. Because I like, you know, interior design and it's pretty lovely. So we just, we have a little interest and I'm glad we did.
So will they each take a separate unit?
Yes.
Okay.
So could we have a staff report, please?
Thank you for the record, Andrea Adams, senior planner, architect Kerlop. And the petitioners described the project pretty well. On the screen behind me is the ground floor plan, non-basement plan of the front-to-back unit that they hope to build. I just note since Mr. Kerlop said that in a previous case, I guess at the historic commission meeting, there was a letter submitted as of the day of the staff report. The only thing that we received was a form letter written by the petitioner, which describes the project and seeks support for it. And persons who identify themselves as residents at fourteen fifteen, twenty-seven forty-three and forty-nine Loomis signed the letter. Loomis has had a series of building permits, none of which are relevant. Also because the, the structure was built in nineteen fifty-two, the historical commission of Watertown held a public hearing on March fourteenth, determined it was not preferably preserved and did not impose demolition delay. In terms of the conditional permit, there are four criteria because they want to exceed the stipulated floor area ratio for this district. So instead of a special permit finding, it's a special permit. The first is whether the site is an appropriate location for the used condition or structure. Based on the material submitted and the analysis done by staff, the proposed structure is not appropriate as designed for the site. As we note, a two-family use is allowed by right in the district up to a point-five floor area ratio and special permit for a floor area ratio of between point-five and point-six-two-five. As the petitioners noted, they want the additional FAR for their daughters to stay in Watertown. And what the staff, however, looked at was this project in terms of the zoning. As I mentioned, the bi-rite floor area ratio, if you look at the limited information submitted, would allow a total of twenty-five thousand seventy-eight square feet of gross floor area plus the basement versus the proposed request, which is two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four of gross floor area ratio plus the basement. This is a total increase of approximately three hundred and eighty-six square feet, which is about a hundred and ninety-three square feet per floor. The petitioner suggested the request for increased FAR is to allow a third bedroom in each unit, which is shown on the next floor plan, which I can put up in a minute. The increased FAR as applied to the building would allow for approximately eight feet of additional length on the side facades. This is not a large increase, but does create approximately sixty-five feet of building facade at the two-story rather than fifty-seven feet. Use, using the increased FAR to allow the attic to be used, such as dormer or adding smaller scale additions for a portion of the facade could be less impactful than the request of relief. Based on our analysis, it does not appear the surrounding two-family uses have this much mass extending into the rear yard. But they also have access to use of a portion of the third floor, namely the half-story. Staff can't make a conclusion in regard to if this request is in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood since minimal supporting information was submitted. In some instance, it has been determined to be appropriate to increase FAR, to reuse an existing structure and add to it. Additions and conversions can add complexity and some flexibility in FAR can allow for a viable solution while retaining an existing structure, although in this case, the existing building is proposed to be demolished. So this is not relevant. So that's the first criteria. The second criteria is impact to the neighborhood. Staff believes this is not met because there is little information submitted showing how the request for more floor area ratio will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The petitioner submitted a form letter seeking support of his project, signed by people who identify themselves as neighborhood residents. However, this type of letter does not indicate if there will be an impact. Also, the mortgage inspection plan, which is not a current dimensioned plot plan, indicates that the existing structure is non-conforming with respect to the side yard setbacks, so far as we can determine. One side yard is eight feet and the other ten, where ten feet and twelve feet are required. The proposed new building, based on the proposed plot plan, will be conforming as far as we can determine with regard to all setbacks. The architecture of the new building is somewhat in keeping with the general style of the existing two-family dwellings in the neighborhood. But the increased length of the facade would increase the mass adjacent to a one-story, single-family house. The building is designed so that the back half of the building shifted further from this neighbor, which does remove some of the impact. Incurred, the third criteria is nuisance or hazard to pedestrians and vehicles. Staff believes this has been conditionally met because the site currently provides two parking spaces in a stacked configuration. And as redeveloped, it will provide four parking spaces. However, we note both the existing and post-construction condition, if approved, meet the section six of the, six of the bylaw for houses with fewer than four bedrooms. Terms of driveway and off-street parking is a condition for a certain width and length. The proposed condition plan indicates the driveways will meet these requirements. However, staff recommends that should the project be approved in some fashion, the width of the new driveways be conditioned to remain at the petitioner's stipulated maximum of nine feet, thereby preserving the required four-foot vegetated buffer to the abutting properties. The last condition is the width of the curb cut and the distance between curb cuts. Since the project is a demolition and the construction of a new two-family, this section of, section six of the bylaw apply, excuse me, of the ordinance applies. As shown on the proposed condition plan, the number of curb cuts, driveway widths and distance between them and the street edge are conforming. So again, should the board choose to in some way approve the project, that is, that criteria is met. In terms of the fourth criteria, it wasn't clear from the documentation submitted whether it was conditionally met, could be conditionally met, or wasn't met. However, ultimately, prior to the issuance of a building permit, if the project is approved in some fashion, the petitioner will need to obtain the Department of Work sign-off for all of the utility connections, curbing, sidewalk improvements, surface restoration, stormwater and erosion control. The proposed project would also have to comply with the DEP's own review process. So in conclusion, based on staff's analysis, the project does not meet at least two of the four criteria for a special permit approval. And staff recommends that it be denied.
So are there questions from the board, comments?
Sure. I'll start. Do I always start though, does anybody else want to?
It goes left to right.
So I guess I would start by saying I entirely agree with the conclusion of the staff report. Because this essentially is, I mean, we're not talking about something that is as of right. You are petitioning for relief for the extra, you know, fraction of FAR. But I believe if you do that, really the onus is on you as the petitioner to make the case that it's justified. And justified in the sense of, you know, whether it meets the criteria for the special permit. And I mean, you know, as much as I agree with the sentiment of allow, of allowing your, to, to do it so your daughters can remain in Watertown, it's not really addressing why you think you should be entitled to the extra point-one-two-five of FAR. And it really does create a building that is eight feet longer than it should be. And it appears to me, you know, very longer than, than is appropriate for this, for this particular area. And I think that, you know, that this increase, the way I read the zoning ordinance, that this small bonus of FAR, as, as Andrea pointed out, is, it seems to me it's really just for certain circumstances where you have an existing structure that you can make the case that, you know, that additional amount is justified. But in this case, you're just making the house eight feet longer than the zoning ordinance allows without really explaining why that should be approved. Whereas I think it says in here, for instance, you could add that FAR in an attic space or something and then not have, not have that extra eight feet of length for which you're asking. So there, I think there's other ways of getting that space. I just don't see the justification here to approve that incremental amount of FAR just based on what you have, you know, or haven't really set out in the plans or even in the answers to the, you know, to the four questions that are in the, in the petition. So that's, that's my thought. I'll leave it at that.
Andrea, would you please for, so that the owners understand, what were the two criteria that were not met for special permit?
Certainly. The first criteria is the specific site is an appropriate location for such use, structure or condition. That's criteria one. The other criteria that we believe was not met was criteria two. The use is developed, will not adversely affect the neighborhood. We believe that it will.
So I guess it goes to me now? If we're going down through the board comments? So when I reviewed the application, I didn't really know kind of what the basis of it was, whether it was a developer in town trying to make a quick buck. We see a lot of nice, smaller, single-family homes across town being demolished and replaced with soulless boxes that's gonna make a lot of money for a developer and a builder, but not do anything for the community. And in fact, rob real estate value from the community by the inappropriateness of the structure. So this may not be a development project and it has other motivations, which I appreciate. However, the result is the same. The building is too big for the site. The added bulk hasn't been justified in any way that I can see. I think the lot coverage, although not indicated in the application, doesn't conform with zoning or would be unlikely to conform with zoning. There's an unfortunate thing happening with the design that probably could be corrected if you chose to, which is essentially taking the front yard and turning it into a parking lot. So taking away a nice lawn and replacing it with four cars with their taillights hanging over the street, the sidewalk. And that's what the neighbors see when they drive home. It's what they experience as they walk by the house, walking their dogs or whatever. And it just, it represents a, unfortunately, it represents a trend in town that has different motivations than these applicants may have. But unfortunately, I think the result is the same. And even the stacked parking that creates that front, front yard full of cars isn't going to work because people don't do it. Nine months out of the year, two of the four cars will be parked on the sidewalk, making the neighborhood feel just that much more like an urban apartment complex. So I concur with, with the staff as well and urge that it be denied. In its present form, I guess it'd be obvious to everybody, but.
Okay. I was very conflicted about this, this proposal personally. Having a two-family, I'd like to leave to my daughters too. And I agree very much with what Gary said about the parking. I, I think that that is detrimental. But what I do like about the proposal, yes, it makes a longer building, but it's offset so you don't see a continuous facade. I don't see that as a real problem. What I do also like is that the building has become narrower. And if you didn't have cars in the front yard, the, the street front would be improved by the wider two side yards. That being said, I think it could work with the reworking, not in this iteration, but if the second floor had two bedrooms, a very large one and a moderate one, and then you prepared the attic for, with dormers as another living space, that could be very attractive and appealing. So I agree with my colleagues about the bulk of the house. So I agree with my colleagues about the bulk of the house. But I would have to agree with the parking issue. I don't have a big problem with the length of the building, but it could be, it could be mitigated, it could be pulled back. That's my feeling.
Yeah, I went out, I went out to the neighborhood the other day and looked at it, and I looked at it in Google Earth, and just for, I was focused mostly on the building length, and I agree with what my colleagues here have said. I think it seems like the length is, if it gets shorter, you're getting out of this FAR question. And I think with some redesign, there's potential to be able to do that and still accomplish what you, what you want to do, and potentially even maybe you'd be able to pull the driveway back. But I think, I have to agree with, the application was largely incomplete. You know, the fact the zoning standards weren't even written in the application, so it was better to go back to the tables, look everything up, and verify that it was what it was and compare it to it. So I just think, in its present form, I don't, I don't see approving this.
So, I have the same opinion. You know that none of us talk to each other before we get here, so it's not like we worked this out or anything, that we're not allowed to be in communication. But anyway, is there something else that we should hear from the audience before we vote? Mind you, this is a decision anyway that has to go to the zoning board, you know that, yeah?
My name is Arthur Hartugian, and I understand what you just said, and, but my point is, I have a right to build this house with the FAR 0.5 percent, and still I'm gonna have two parking spaces, same, it's just the building will be a little bit shorter. So, but on that case, whatever things I'm going to build, I'm gonna lose one bedroom for each unit. So, my understanding, I'm not building something bigger, and if, you know, for sure, around Watertown, there is a lot of new construction, and recently was done in Lumis on Donna Street. These are nice houses. I really like it, and I didn't want to go up too much to keep the house matching to the neighborhood. Instead of using the attic space, I'm not going to use that. I would like to have eight feet longer, so I can have additional bedroom. Additional bedroom, that means whatever I'm building, I'm trying to build for the normal family. So, one master and then two bedroom for kids, that's all. I don't ask additional four bedrooms. It's just a normal size. I remember when I came to America twenty years ago, I tried to rent an apartment, and I was with my family, with two kids, and of course, we tried to find the cheaper apartment. They didn't allow us to have one bedroom, so we can stay. That was, for us, was a little bit surprising, but when we get to the law, and we understand this is the way you're living here. So that's why, whatever I'm building, I'm thinking this is for the normal family. That's why I ask another eight feet, so I will have additional bedroom. Other than, I can build that house without that bedroom, or I can make a one-bedroom or two-bedroom bigger, a little bit, but I will still have same design or similar design with the two parking and build it.
I have a question. I'm not professional, so, and I asked you to clarify for me. My question is, this was special permit case, and they're asking something that we have pretty in other designs. So in other words, if we shrink the house and use the, keep the FAR, are we allowed to make our single house, turn it into two-family or not? We are, correct?
May I?
That's a question, that's not a statement.
As was explained several times to Mr. Hartugian, if you build according to .5 FAR, you can, you've been given permission to demolish the existing house. The only reason that we can determine, since the application wasn't filled out completely, the table in the application on the second page wasn't filled out completely, the only thing that we can see that you need relief for, that while you're here, is because you're building a house that's bigger than .5 FAR.
Okay.
If you maintain .5 FAR, assuming everything else passes through the building department and the zoning officer is conforming, you can build by right.
Okay, thank you. You confirmed my understanding that he told me. In that case, if we shrink the house and bring it into conformity, we will have same design and same problems, correct, potentially? We could have two-car garage, you know, two-car parking spots on each side of the two-family house. So I don't see how that eliminates or exaggerates the problem that we have a longer house. The parking problem still will be there, correct?
As I said, you can build by right. What that means is whether or not this particular board, or the Zoning Board of Appeals feels there could be a better design with respect to certain aspects of your proposal, the only permit you need is building permit. So, the opinion of the board in some way becomes irrelevant.
Thank you. So...
Can I ask this?
Okay, no, that's, 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 which means that one of the reasoning I hear from the board is the concern about the parking, which brings me back, if we confirm, we don't even need the opinion, we can go ahead and do, build a house. And if that creates a neighborhood problem, parking problem, or as you expressed, adverse effect on neighborhood, then that will, without, with or without your permission, if we shrink the size of the building, we will still be able to do, correct? So I don't know how this eliminates a problem for the neighborhood, unless there is another adverse effect that you said, that other than parking, that might be not, I might miss that originally? Was there any other adverse effect on a neighborhood, other than parking?
So Jason, did, Jason wanted to say something here?
Well, I'll start by answering your question. I mean, they are two separate issues, you're correct. I think one of the adverse effects we're talking about is the length. If you were to shrink it by eight feet, you would meet, apparently, according to the calculations, the .5 FAR, you're good to go, as far as, as far as the permit is concerned, as I understand it. And you could still put in the two tandem parking spaces.
Yeah.
There's nothing really that would prevent you from doing that. Correct me if I'm wrong about that, but that's how I read the report. What I wanted to say is that, as an architect, I'm looking at the plans, and I, you know, your bedrooms are still pretty generous. What you need to do, if you wanted to keep three bedrooms, you need to just, well, I mean, if you want to do this as of right, you need to remove four feet from each unit, or thought of another way, two feet from the front, two feet from the back of each unit. Looks to me like you could still have some three decent-sized bedrooms and do what you want to do. They're not going to be as, you know, as grand as the master bedrooms you have, and some of the second, the second and third bedrooms might not be quite as long, but they're 12 foot eight, so my kids' bedrooms are nowhere near that long.
Okay.
Right now, when we, right now, we're living, we have a 10 by 10. Too small, 12, not that big.
So, it's not up to us to decide your bedroom size, but it is a good suggestion. But it's an interesting question right now, whether you should withdraw this, change it, and resubmit, or push on and try it with the zoning board. I don't think it'll be successful with the zoning board, but that's just a personal opinion.
I want to understand, by the right, I can ask for 6.25 percent. And I didn't ask 6.25 percent, I asked just a little bit, like 5.7, yes? Increasing. And then I don't understand, why is that by the right, we can ask 6.25? In which case, we can ask?
But it's not as of right. That's why you're here tonight, because you require...
I understand, but there is a law, you can ask. You can ask, and then...
Yes.
That means if something, something is, doesn't work well. If I can ask, that means we can have some hope, understand, and we did, I didn't ask all the way to the 6.25, I asked just a little. That's why we looked the plum many times.
But it still does add eight feet, and it's really, this is all about that additional eight feet you're asking for.
I think the general feeling is...
That's why I'm here, today.
General feeling is the house is too big for the site. I mean, I think that's what we're talking about.
In terms of the context with the adjoining homes...
Yeah, yeah.
...that are on either side of it, they're both single-family homes. So I think that's what the, when you get to adverse impacts in the neighborhood, that's what we as a board have to think about.
My left side is not single-family, it's a two-family, front two-family, and other front two-family, other side two-family. Just my best, if I look from the street, the right side is a small house, he wants to build a bigger one, but he's settled, and the new owner just bought it, and they want to think something, and...
I think, I think the planning board staff have been always very understanding and reasonable. So we have to come to an acceptable solution for your needs. And we would like to do that in a way that the planning board is happy with it. You know, I am an architect, also a town planner, and I am always sensitive, planning board colleagues, so. I think we have to do something to satisfy the concerns or recommendations of the planning board staff and the planning board members. But I have some questions regarding shaping of the design. Now, if it so happens that the ground floor is slightly larger, but the upper level is squeezed in, would that be considered kind of a better situation as size of the building, or you would like just a block for the whole length? Or this is something subjective that we have to work with the planning board staff? That's number one question.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's an area thing we're talking about, so whether whichever floor it comes out of.
My second question, did I understand right, if there is an attic bedroom that won't count in the FAR, or it will count? I mean, I wasn't there...
It will. It depends upon whether it, it's a two-part test. It'll count, and you also have to meet the half-story calculation.
Okay. So, the FAR will be probably what we have now, but the building will look smaller in volume. That would be the advantage, right?
Right. And I guess all I would say is, I have to caution you that you're more than welcome to meet with us, and we'll work with you to find perhaps a design that's more palatable to the planning board. But I will warn you that if you go ahead with the application as is, I don't believe you'll get a swift action from the Zoning Board of Appeals. They are very particular that they want all of the data filled out, and dimensioned plans, and dimensioned elevations, a surveyed plot plan. So I would caution you that even if you get to that point with the planning board, you're going to have to, I would strongly recommend that you make absolutely sure that your application is fully complete before you go on to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. So probably the owner's attorney will take care of that issue, so that everything is complete and not in piecemeal. And my suggestion is kind of reconsider the whole scenario here and come back with a new, new proposal. So whether you can, may consider that as a continuation, or a withdrawal of the application, I don't know technically how would you like to take that.
May I?
Please answer.
You can do either. If you continue, that means you don't go forward to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and you would presumably work with staff and/or potentially the board until they feel satisfied that the issues raised tonight have been addressed. That could take one meeting or a number of meetings. After that, assuming that the planning board, I mean, you could go forward today with a denial, but...
No, I don't think, maybe they will approve.
Let me just, let me finish the example, more for the benefit of, more for the benefit of the applicants than for you, because you've been through the process before. I think it's important to clarify that the final arbiter in this case is the Zoning Board of Appeals. So the planning board is advisory. The Zoning Board of Appeals either approves, denies, or approves with conditions. So if you want to work to the point where you receive what you consider to be a satisfactory recommendation by the planning board to the Zoning Board of Appeals, you can certainly do that. But that does not necessarily guarantee that the Zoning Board of Appeals will also follow that recommendation. They have their independent ability, and they themselves can also approve, approve with conditions, or deny, regardless of what the staff or the planning board says. And I'm not trying to be harsh, I'm trying to make it very clear that it, that is because it is a discretionary permit. They do not, neither this board in its advisory capacity, nor the Zoning Board of Appeals in its final judgment are required to give you an approval. If they do not, you can then, you are prohibited from refiling the exact same project for two years, if you want to go through this process again. So, you would have to make, if you received an ultimate denial by the Zoning Board of Appeals, you would have to, as the law says, substantially alter it in order to be able to refile it. If you refiled the exact same thing, there's a moratorium on you doing it for two years.
No, we understand, we also not...
Right. So I'm just, I'm giving you feedback so you can make an intelligent, informed, cost-effective decision. The staff, as far as I'm concerned, is willing to work with you to achieve an alternate design, if that's your desire.
Yes, you want more of the design, I'm happy.
Okay, so you're asking for continuation and changing the design?
Let me finish. You have two options. If you get a continuance, you will be held in abance until that occurs. And the other option is to withdraw, work with staff, and refile perhaps an alternate design that may come in with a staff approval from the beginning, or a staff recommendation of conditional approval from the beginning. But that's ultimately your choice.
And those two choices of a required design timeframe, is one plus up and the other?
If, if you withdraw, you would refile your new application. That would depend upon when you're ready. If you work with staff, we'll work with you as diligently as we can. But you're gonna be at the planning board until you feel you have the recommendation you want. That could be one iteration or two iterations.
Got it all together here?
I think I'm just gonna read that, and let's say withdraw.
So, our recommendation frankly is to withdraw and resubmit when you've shrunk it down a little bit. But in the meantime, we have the obligation to vote, and so we entertain a motion, I believe.
Okay.
I should note that, I'm sorry, if you withdraw, you would have to pay for a renoticing. Because the, the process that you've begun terminates, and then a new process begins.
So, do we want to move for denial, or do we want to withdraw?
Denial. I think we don't have a choice, it's...
They're asking for continuation, so...
We, we can't, we can't move that they resubmit, we can only move for denial or approval.
You can grant a continuance.
Yeah, I think that's...
I've already expressed our opinion that I, I think they ought to withdraw and, and reappear.
You can also make a suggestion.
In the motion.
I mean, if you're gonna make the recommendation that they withdraw and reappear, you can't force them to. So I would suggest that you couch the motion that you advise the applicant to withdraw and reappear, but ultimately, if they continue with this particular design, it's a denial. Because the purpose of a continuance is to give them time to change the design, so you hold this particular vote in advance.
You got it?
No.
Let's see what happens here. I mean, they'll, they'll clean it up, so...
So I believe they want a continuance, or that's what Architect's by law...
Okay, well, you can rewrite this, it's necessary. I'll just say... I'll just say, "Based on the findings, the proposed project does not meet the criteria set forth under Section 9.05B and is not consistent with the general purpose of the ordinance outlined in Section 1 of the Watertown zoning ordinance, the planning board is recommending that the special permit under 5.04 be denied and..."
So you're not, you're not entertaining that they should have a continuance?
We should, we should first start...
You're not entertaining that?
Recommending that they resubmit, and otherwise, if that doesn't happen, that we have to deny what's in front of us.
If you're, if you're trying to allow them to continue at the planning board, you don't have to vote. It's a natural move forward to this idea.
Because they asked for a continuance from us.
Oh, and so we don't need to vote on anything?
No.
The petition will be continued.
Yeah, set a vote to accept their continuance.
Is that what we're deciding to do, it sounds like?
Yes. Is that, would you like to do?
What do you want to do, Jan?
Yes, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would mean that...
We should still vote on that.
They, yes.
We should still vote that we all approve it.
To accept the continuance.
Yes.
Accept the continuance.
So...
You need a second.
And there is a motion before us that we suggest they accept the continuance.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So...
I can get second.
Second, I'll second it.
I wondered if you'd notice.
So, we've tried to be somewhat helpful here, but it just needs a little...
So that means that if all else is held, holds, they'll be back before you on June 12.